Okay, Namaste all. Sorry again for the delay, but we're still learning the system. So hopefully, we should be good as we move along. Today is the last study session that we're going to have for the Veda. So today we are going to cover the chapters nine and 10. Vimalji, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Vishwajin.
Okay, so today's sessions are nine, chapters are nine and 10, and it's going to be presented by Vimal Vilaniji. Vimalji presented another session earlier and we got very, we got request from people that Vimalji should present another session as well. As you know him, Vimalji is a seeker. He's the seeker of Vedic knowledge. He's the, he's the one who has been teaching a group of youngsters about the Vedic principles. So he has developed many simpler techniques to impart this knowledge in a very simple manner. And in my last conversation, Vimalji mentioned to me that his aim is not to have anyone memorize anything and at the same time making him or her understand what is going on. So it's a privilege to have Vimalji on this call and he again accepted my request to work on the presentation on a very short notice. So we appreciate your, his time and effort that he has put in. And now I'll pass it on to Vimalji to start his presentation. I will be presenting his screens and he will be talking. So whenever he instructs to move to the next screen, the next screen, I will move over to Vimalji now.
Namaste everyone. We start with the prayer, which is on second slide, Vishwajin. If you go to the second slide, everyone can see the prayer. Since you are here, you can decide it loudly so that it also helps you. May the Lord protect us both. May he nourish us both. May he make us strong. May we be brilliant in our studies. May we never have any disputes. Oh, peace, peace, peace. Vishwajin, you can go to slide number three now. And every time I say next, you just hit the down arrow key or click so that it moves to the next part of the session. Okay. Right, so again, I just, some of you who were not there on the last call, the objective of these sessions is to prepare you for Veda. And at the same time, we learn about Vedic Dharma. But the most important thing is we understand the Y, W's of our practices. Why, what, when and which, right? That's the most critical thing. And preparing Veda is important, but understanding what we are learning is more important, right? So I've heard concerns from several students who are registered. Adults and youngsters combined that we are not prepared or we are underprepared or the exam seems to be little tough or what happens if I don't do well? Nothing happens, right? What happens is you find out where, what are your weak points and what are your strong points? And you move on from there. That's the right way to learn. When we don't know something, the beauty of it is I know that I have to teach myself that. Right? If we don't, if we don't do that, then we'll always be ignorant about that topic. And that is a worse thing than finding out that I don't know. Right? So that's, that, that is what you have to build up and learn as you move on. Right? Again, approach, I will try to stick to the material as much as possible, but I just want to caution you that I'm going to take a little bit different approach to this because the material covered in one chapter is quite bit extensive, whereas in the other chapter it's quite bit light. But again, several of these topics have already been covered in the past chapters. It will make it a little bit easy to understand the last chapter, right? And in the last chapters, there are more stories. I'm not going to go through those stories, but I'm going to focus on what are the critical points to focus on while you read the stories. Reading the story for your curriculum is important because there may be some questions that will come from those stories, right? Again, I won't use any complex or hard Sanskrit word, which are not necessary. If I use a word, then that means you need to understand that word and learn about it. There's going to be a light squeeze, a quiz at the end of the chapters as we go through and then we can have a clear on a topic after each session as well. So again, two sessions, Vishwajin, next slide, which says session topics. You're going to learn about Sanskars today, which is chapter nine in your curriculum books. Definition of Sanskar, significance of Sanskar and sixteen Sanskars, the sacred sacraments, the ceremonies that are performed. Next. Virtues and morals. It is on the same slide as session topics. We want to understand what is the difference between moral and ethics? Importance of virtues? How to acquire those virtues? And we'll discuss certain of these virtues like non-violence, truth, respect, forgiveness and fearlessness. And that's what's discussed in the curriculum. So whatever, whatever is read on this slide is discussed in your curriculum and we'll try to stick to it as much as possible. Next slide, Vishwajin. Right? So we start with the first session. I reversed these topics and I'll give you a reason why I reversed it. Chapter 10 is first and chapter nine is later on. When I come to chapter nine, I'll tell you why we took chapter, chapter 10 first. Now, the beauty of the curriculum, which I didn't even realize myself, that if you notice chapter one of this curriculum is Dharma and chapter 10 is also Dharma. Right? We could have called both the chapters Dharma, right? So what you see on this slide is lot of virtues, lot of good qualities we need to embrace. Next slide please, which says moral and ethics. So we want to understand what is the difference between moral and ethics? Moral is something which sets a standard for ourselves, which we follow. That helps us decide what is right and wrong. And it, it is not concerned with any culture, society, country or place, right? So moral is true on all grounds, anywhere and everywhere. That is a moral, right? If I have to, if someone tells me that you have to be truthful, it does not matter where I am and with whom I am, at what age of my life or with group, with the group I am with. Whether I'm at workplace, I'm at home, I'm in a samaj, I have to follow truth. That is a moral. Ethics on the other hand are slightly different. Ethics are set up by groups, countries, tamages. They have different rules and regulations which makes up the ethics, right? You may have heard on the television or in newspapers, you may have read that United States State Senate has an ethics committee. They never have a moral committee. So that is the difference, right? Because the group who gets together said, these are the standards by which we go for. If you go in a workplace, on the first day you join, they're going to give you a book of ethics. They're going to say, these are the code of conduct for our company. When you are not in that company, you may not follow that book. But there is an overlap between moral and ethics, right? So in this particular book, in the curriculum, we use this both words interchangeably. Next slide, Vishwajin, you can click the next, right? So we classify our actions into good and bad, what is right and wrong. So morality is what investigates into that. Morality is thinking about that in making a decision, what is right and what is wrong. And if that action which you are deciding upon is universal in nature, then it is morals. If it is restricted or limited to a certain group, then it's ethics. Next. Now how, as I said, that chapter 10 ends with, is also a chapter of Dharma, right? Dharma has several meanings and in this present context, we say Dharma, Dharma refers what is right and which is, what is righteous, meaning what is good. What is good for me is good for you. A dharma is the opposite of it, right? It is the wrong thing to do, right? This is something you, which may really throw you off if you don't understand properly, right? Which, it's easy to say what is right and wrong, but it's difficult to choose between the two rights. Right? So then, that is what really morals come into play, your virtues came to play, but that's where the Dharma comes into play. Between the two rights, which one should I pick? And the virtues we are going to learn helps us achieve that. There is a hierarchy on those virtues as well, right? So that is, that is how complex this subject matter is, that when we're learning about morals, it is not an easy subject, it's never an easy decision to choose, right? And as I said, next please. As I said, in the book, curriculum book we have given you, we are all, to my view, we are only talking about morals. We are really not talking about ethics in its true sense, but the words are used interchangeably, not only in this book, also in the world outside. Next slide, which says guide to follow morals. Now that you understand what is the difference between moral and ethics, you understand what is morals or what is morality, how, how do I follow it? How do I say something I do? As I said, that it's difficult to choose, it's easy to choose between right and wrong, but it's difficult to choose between the two rights or between the two wrongs in that matter of fact. So here are some guidelines which you may follow. Now these guidelines, as I said, that I'm going to deviate from this path because if I just walk through the chapter of the curriculum chapter, there are only stories in there, right? So it would be boring to read the same stories again. So I've pulled out a little bit so that we walk away from this session with little bit more than what the book is trying to teach us. Maybe this may not be in your test because we may, we are not going to ask you any questions in the Veda test, which are not coming from the book itself, right? But again, you will learn some things that will help you to answer those questions. If you have to make a guess, things like this may come in a place, say, hey, I, I, I heard about this on the station and it makes sense to go for that second answer because the first one seems a little bit weak when I apply all my knowledge. Right? So ethics cannot be decided based on your feeling. You can't say that I, I don't feel like speaking the truth to this, so I will just lie. Feelings cannot come into the play. Your religious beliefs cannot come into the play, right? When we say religion, religious, religious code of conduct book is there. Certain religions have certain books, they follow the books and say, as for my religion, I can do some things that are not acceptable in a certain sort of society and that actually becomes an ethic. It cannot be morality, right? So religious belief, some religions believe that eating meat is okay. Vedas clearly says that eating meat is harming animals and that is not okay because it violates the rule, rule of non-violence or the virtue of non-violence, right? So that is what it means. We don't call that a religious belief. We call it that belief, Vedas doesn't have anything belief, belief as a concrete truth, right? It cannot be decided by law. A country cannot say this is true or false when it comes to your personal ethics. Some truth, as I said, is same everywhere. And lastly, because the society accepts it, it is not okay. It's, that's the difference between moral and ethics we talk about. The same thing applies, that you cannot decide what is right or wrong based on certain society accepting it, based on certain groups accepting it, based on your personal feelings. Whereas on the other side, what are the dos? How do I cultivate these values? How do I get these good qualities, right? What is right for me and right for others is the right thing to do. And when we say others, it's not the selective people or a group, it's everybody, right? Teaching of the wisdom that comes from the wise ones. Saints, gurus, teachers, Acharyas, swamis, who have read Vedas and digested them and who bring us the truth, their word has to be trusted, right? Not any guru, people you, you know that they have learned the truth, people who know who are, who I can explain you what is right and wrong and gives you a logical answer. We are talking about those, those people as the wise one, right? The next source is the books and our scriptures. As I said, Vedas has nothing in there which is not true because Vedas was the knowledge given to the four Ishyas while in the state of super-conscious mind. And that is considered to be true. Is the Shruti Ghan, that is the Granth Jahaad and then Smiti, which come from the Vedas. Now there, there may be some dilution. The books that have been written of Vedas may or may not be correct. So we have to make sure that the source of secondary sources we are reading are authenticated. And Sadhachar, that goes back to the people who have actually lived life based on Vedas, right? How the Vedas has described the life of Skrikan. So those, we can learn from them, right? And if nothing, what does your heart tell you? What does your soul tell you when you are in trouble of making the right decision? When you are lost, that what should I do between, between right and wrong? I, I'm not able to make a judgment call. Ask your inner self, it will tell you. Next. This is the golden principle. Do not do, do not do to others what you don't want them to do to you. So when you are stuck, ask your inner voice this question and whatever answer your inner voice honestly gives you without putting anything else into the mix, that would be the right answer. Next slide, Vishwajin. How to acquire these virtues? To acquire good virtues, we have to think that what is the welfare for us and others? Next, Vishwajin. What are bad virtues? It's opposite of it. Something that we do harms others, the actions which harms us and others. So here is inclusive of both, you and me. It is not just about us and it is not just about someone else. In both cases, in good and bad, we have to make sure that it is not harming us as well. It is protecting you and it is protecting others. Next. Ethics is about getting clarity, summarizing what is good values and what are the bad values. If you don't understand, if you don't have a clarity of it, what is good and bad, we can really not make the call and we'll get stuck on that question, what should I do all the time? And the last one, one more, Vishwajin, effort. We have to make a genuine effort. If you want to acquire good virtues and drop the bad ones, right? Getting a clarity is not enough. We have to make an effort and observe discipline to follow it. Without that, it is not going to be possible. You can keep on singing the song, I want to become a good person, I want to become a good person. But without an effort behind it, without observing discipline to embrace that value, you won't be able to get there. Next slide. So let's talk about non-violence, which is one of the first virtues which has been put out there in the curriculum book. It tells your story, as I said, I'm not going to go through the stories, but the line here is Ahimsa Param Dharma. Ahimsa is held at the highest level. And the reason being, when you follow Ahimsa, lot of other good virtues will start sticking to you. Good virtues are sticky and the bad ones are sticky as well. It's just like a good company, you have good friends, their goodness will rub off on you. The same way you acquire one good value, one good virtue, the other good virtues will start sticking on to that. And we'll see in a moment how, right? So Ahimsa, as I said, is considered as supreme virtue. We had also learned about this Ahimsa in the last session when we talked about yams. Yam is how you deal with the society and the first one on the top of the list was Ahimsa, right? It is avoidance of hurting both, again, inclusive you and me. We should not hurt anybody and anybody here is inclusive of animals, plants, any living organism. Next. Why do we cause hurt to others, right? So now you see how they are sticky. If we hate someone, then our nature will become violent. If you are angry on someone, we are becoming violent and violent. If you sustain that anger again and again against someone, you will, you will get a feeling of hurting them. Same happens with jealousy, when you have a revengeful attitude, right? Sometimes we say that I just want to get things done. And when we try to do that, we are being selfish, that's the other way of putting that, getting the task done, because I am the only one who matters. When you have that kind of a feeling, you are going to hurt someone on the way, right? Lack of attention, it's a little bit real tricky. When I don't get attention, then I would hurt someone, right? And lack of culture. When we don't understand certain cultures or certain behavior, how people do things, we discriminate and distinguish ourselves from it. You could...
Vimalji, we're not getting the audio for some reason. I have texted him, hopefully he will be back, just be patient.
You are a violent person, there is no gateway for you to reach Moksha.
Vimalji?
Ah, Buliyah.
Didn't get your audio for last three minutes. So I'm still...
Can you hear me?
Yes, I, we can hear you now.
Okay. So last, last thing I said was how do we cultivate Ahimsa?
No, Vimalji...
Has everybody heard about it?
No, for last three minutes, we did not get the audio.
Okay.
So the screen, you see, we are on the same screen as of now.
Okay. So what you can do is go, go to the next arrow, go to the next bullet point, which if you go next slide. Okay, yeah, I got it.
Okay.
Right? So what I was talking about is, we know the reasons what causes hurt. As I said, if you, if you hate someone, then chances are you'll become a violent person, no matter what you try to do. So on that, that particular, the left side of the box where it says reasons for causing hurt is, is what makes you a violent person. So how do I cultivate? How do I become a non-violent person? How do I change my behavior, right? So in the center box, which says cultivating Ahimsa, we are saying that we have to first make a resolve, right? We have to take a vow, we have to make a commitment to ourselves. When we don't make commitment to ourselves, chances are we are going to drop in the cracks and fall down. So that, once we have made the commitment that I won't hate people or if I hate people, I'll try to make, change my behavior so that I hate them less. That's progress. Give up anger, giving up anger is easy said than done, right? We all get angry, but if you learn how to cultivate your anger, then it will help you. Same thing with jealousy, right? Jealousy is, is one of the biggest enemy we have, which hides underneath us and causes us lot of damage. So if you, if you are able, able to remove jealousy from your life, then it helps you overcome non-violence, right? We said that violence also happens mentally. So jealousy is one of those ways, when, when you are being jealous, you are mentally hurting someone. That includes you. We said it is both you and someone else. So by not observing this, you are hurting yourself and hurting yourself is also Ahimsa. So don't forget that. You sometimes think that, hey, I'm being jealous, I'm not hurting anyone. That's not true. The definition goes wide enough to say that it is you and others. Forgiveness. What I said earlier, that good virtues stick together. So when you are being non-violent, forgiveness is your companion. You'll be able to forgive people very easily. When you forgive people, you don't want to hurt them anymore because that, if the apology or forgiveness comes from your heart, then there is no reason to have any resentment against that person. You just move on, right? Controlling your speech, you basically talk a lot and talk useless things. When we talk useless things in that saying, we are not paying attention. We are just dabbling around, not, not even seeing what we are saying, right? And that also includes today's, if you look at social media chats, right? That also includes that, not because it is not, we are not using our tongue to, our tongue and mouth to communicate. The social media itself has become that. The young kids who have started using social media, who are using social media, I have to be careful what you put out that on those chats, right? So there are consequences for that. So this control of speech includes that. And we had also talked this, about this control of speech in, in the yams and niams, which fall on the Brahmacharya and partly on the Pratyahar. That is, you have to observe discipline. You can't indulge into thing a, a whole lot. You should indulge but up to a necessity. Don't make that your want. You can kindness, not discriminating, avoiding meat. So you develop compassion for other life forms that helps you develop kindness and compassion. And for avoiding to eat meat, if we understand that other life forms are as valuable as ours, then you will never hurt an animal or you would never be selfish to have something on your plate which came from a life form. Prayer and knowledge are critical components because when you pray, it calms your mind down and knowledge gives you clarity. Next. Benefits. So, if I don't tell you what is the benefit of impressing a virtue, then what is the goodness in that? Right, why should I do it? Is what we are answering here. You should do it because it will improve your health. It will improve your mental clarity. It will make you a happy and a peaceful person. Right, it could improve clarity. Next. The last thing I had said on the previous slide was if you have a ahimsa in you, if you're ahimsa in you, then you can never reach moksha. There is no way, no how. And that's why it sits as a first yam in the chain. The next virtue we talk about is truth. Satyam eva jayate is what something you may have heard about. Truth is one thing is always a point of victory. Truth can never fail. If you are truthful, you can never fail. That's what this says. Right? But it's, we find it difficult to be truthful. Right, because there are three aspects to it. You have to be truthful by mind, speech and body. And you cannot compromise on any one of those. Right, and there are three aspects to it. I'm making sure we have a right understanding. Our speech is truthful and actions are truthful. So, understanding links with mind. Speech means what we say. And the third one is body by which we act. Right? So, all three are important. And if you fail in any one of them, then we are not being truthful. Next. There are four aspects to speech. And this is again not covered in your book, so I'm going to walk through real quick. Satyam is raw truth. Hitam is something we say should result in good. Sometimes we try to speak truth in a very harsh way. You say, I don't care. I'm speaking the truth. You don't see what consequences you are creating against it. So, you have to think before you say to make sure that you are not making the situation worse. Priyam, whatever you see has to come in a very pleasant form. Right? Lot of time, as I said, you say, I'm speaking the truth. But you are saying it in a way, it almost sounds an abusive way of putting it. That's not really speaking truth. You are not observing all three things which are said about. And last one is observing discipline. And this falls under just what we talked a while ago. We talk a lot. Try to observe silence in your life. It will be easy for you to follow truth. Next. Cultivating truth. So, how do I become a truthful person? Right? Realize the value of truth. Right, when you speak a truth, you are fearless. You don't have to worry about anything. You don't have to remember what I said. Because whatever you said was truth and truth never erases. Right, when you start picking... you start saying lies thing, now one lie leads to other. Now, you don't know in which sequence you said and how much you said. Right? Truth is the only way to Dharma. Dharma teaches us what is right and good. So, truth supports that fully. So, if you speak the truth, you will be following Dharma all the time. Your mental strength, as I said, will improve. Again, you have to take a vow. You have to make a commitment to yourself. And last one, as I said, mitam, observe silence. Next. Benefits makes you feel less. So, nonviolence, you observe forgiveness. Truthful, you become fearless. So, if you are following nonviolence, forgiveness comes as a benefit package. If you are following truth, fearlessness comes with a benefit package. So, one in two, buy one, get one free. Go Christmas shopping with truth and you'll get fearlessness free. People will trust you. You have the courage to stand up for yourself. Right, because you have nothing to hide. Your confidence will go off the roof. And you get a benefit of peaceful mind. Next slide. Fearlessness. So, we just talked about it. If I'm truthful, I'm fearless. Right, fearless is a natural instinct of mind. It's an instinct of mind. Our mind reacts to certain things. Right, most of the time, it's because of confusion and illusions. Like I see something in the darkness. Because I don't know what it is, I assume, start assuming something. What is lying in that darkness is a piece of rope and I think that is a snake and I get fearful. Right, and the last one. When we don't have faith, right, when we talk about faith in whom. If you don't have faith in God, then you'll always be fearful. I met a person today at home temple. And you were saying that my wife goes to temple because she is fearful that God will punish me if I don't. That's not the reason to go to temple. You should go with full faith in your heart to the temple if you want to. You should worship with full faith. That if I do anything wrong, God is going to punish me. That is the law of the land. But if I'm doing everything right, there is no way God is going to punish me. He is going to help me. If you have that confidence and faith in God, you will never fail. You will never be fearless. Next. Vishwaji, next. You can hear me, right?
Yes, I can.
Okay. So, what are the disadvantages of being fearful, right? When you are fear... when you have fear in yourself, what goes wrong gives you unpleasant feeling. Right, and there is no benefit to that. You're not gaining anything by being fearful when it is out of illusion and confusion. Right? Weakness. That is a weakness of your mind. Fear itself is a weakness of your mind. It's nothing more than that. Right, you'll have negative feelings. You're always... If you run, your mind will be running with lot of negative feelings. Next slide please. There are many benefits to this. You'll be much happy person when you are not fearless, when you don't fear. Self-confidence, of course, because you don't fear, self-confidence is an opposite of fear. You fear when you are put on a stage and asked to say something. You're fearful that what will people think about me? Right, and then say, oh, the person doesn't have self-confidence. As yourself, our confidence will build. Right? Your intellectual strength will build. You'll have positive thoughts in your mind all the time. Move on to the next slide please. Forgiveness. So, forgiveness is a cousin which comes with nonviolence. Right? The definition is tricky, so I put it out there. Forgiveness is a deliberate action you have to take to remove the resentment against some person or a group, right? Sort of opposite party we can call. But when you forgive, just understand, you are not denying that something wrong was done here. So, you're not forgiving what was done wrong. You're forgiving the person who did wrong. So, you're forgiving the person who lives in that body, not his actions. His actions have consequences. So, you're not saying that whatever he did was okay. Right? That's not what we are fine for. So, that is the fine line, that red line underlying is very critical to understand when you forgive somebody. Next. Right, so why should I practice forgiveness? Right, because it is going to make you a happy person. You can move on. You don't have to keep that baggage of resentment in you. Right, your relationships will improve. It is the best way of resolving any conflicts, right? You are in conflict with someone. We recited the mantra, right? Maybe never have any disputes. That is forgiveness. If you don't have forgiveness, then you will hang on to those disputes. Right, you will cultivate kindness and compassion in you. Next. How to practice it? First benefit of... First way to practice forgiveness is understand the value of forgiveness. Right, there is more benefit to you than someone else when you forgive. Because when you don't forget, you don't forgive someone, you are the one suffering, not the opposite party. When you understand that, that nothing is wrong. If I don't forget, I am the one who is going to suffer. If you understand that personal benefit, then you will learn the art of forgiving real quick. Right? Practice awareness, let things go, let's move on. Those are all good words to churn on when you want to forgive someone. Next. Okay, so last one in this is respect. In the curriculum which we have, respect has two parts to it. I have combined them both here. Right, I've put a very famous mantra which is most of, you know, matri deva bava, pitri deva bava, acharya deva bava and atiti deva bava. Respect your parents, respect your gurus and respect your guests. Because they are all form of devs. They all give you something. Something which is very valuable. They always help you in your growth, process of growth. Next. What is respect, right? Respect is something valuable we see in others. That is respect. So, respect is not given. It is actually earned. When we earn that value which someone has, that's when we develop respect for someone. So, we respect our parents because they have given us something very, very valuable. They have helped us in the times when we were suffering or when we were going through tough times. Right, showed us kindness. They were nice enough to explain to us the situations. They are the ones who told that it is okay when you made a mistake. Right? So, that is what respect is and that's how you develop it, right? If you have a positive mind frame about someone's value. Next. How to cultivate respect? This is very important, right? Most of the time, people will tell you that, bete namaste karo. Right, and that's respect. You're showing respect to someone, but do you really mean it? That's what matters here. It is not there, right? And namaste is still okay. In this country, when we teach kids that you should go and get blessings from your grandparents or your dad by touching their feet, most of the time, we don't do it because it means nothing to us. But if you understand the underlying principles of why that custom had come into place, it was out of respect, of utter respect that by having been blessed by other people makes a positive impact in my life, then you will do it. It would not be a question of why I should do it. Right, so how can you develop that, right? Being an honest person, listening to people, right? You have to honest to be a parent. You should be able to listen to someone who is elder than you or even younger than you in order fact. Right? Be able to find the good values in someone. Because not everybody is same. Everybody has some goodness in them. So, when we are able to recognize that, that's when we will develop respect for them. Right? Learning how to ask for an apology. That's another way, a very good way of saying that I show respect because I made a mistake. You have to be the big person. You have to be the big guy to say that, hey, I'm sorry. And showing gratitude. That's the last one which is very critical as well. You have to show gratitude. You have to be thankful for what you have received from some people. You forget that all the time. If you had to touch the parent's feet every day, that's what you should keep in mind, that it is a way of saying thank you. And in return, you are getting blessings. So, again, two in one. Next. This is a good quote I found from somewhere. I don't know who wrote it, but it is really good. Respect for ourselves guides our morals. Respect for others guides our manners. So, respect is showing our manners. Next slide. So, this brings us to the end of part one, chapter 10, virtue, morals and ethics. We covered quite bit of our material. So, we're going to run you through this test and then open up the question and answer session. And these questions are pretty much from your book, but... We'll give you one minute. I'm going to read out the question for people who are on the audio.
Hello?
Yes?
I have a question.
Can we hold up the question for a minute before we go through this quiz?
Okay.
Okay? I'm going to read up the question for people just only on the audio. Morality is... morality is deciding what? There are four answers. Only right actions, only wrong actions, both right and wrong actions or none of the above. Question number two. To whom should we respect? Or to whom should we show respect should be the actual question. Parents, teachers, younger siblings, neighbors, only unexpected guests? It's a multi-choice question. One or may answers may be correct in this case. Third question. Which is a supreme virtue? Truthfulness, nonviolence, fearlessness, forgiveness, none of the above? And last question, true or false? Being truthful makes you fearless, true or false? I think it's appropriate if everyone types their questions, types their answers in the message. Okay, viewer 35 has posted answers for morality is deciding for the first question. You all can post your answers on the chat and think on it. Okay, I'm going to unmute everyone else again. But please be careful that if you are not discussing, speaking anything for this study session, please mute yourself. That way, others can listen to each other better. With that request, I'm going to unmute all of us for any questions and answers. Anyone has a question? Abha or Adia had a question?
No. Thank you.
Another girl asked a question.
Hello?
Yeah?
It's here.
You have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
If we should be nonviolent to animals and humans, should we all be vegetarians?
If we have to be nonviolent, should be vegetarians. Is that your question?
Yes.
Yes, according to Vedas, the answer is yes. Because when you don't observe vegetarianism, what goes on your dinner plate? It is going to be some animal, right? In whichever form it came from. So, observing vegetarianism is observing non-violence.
You will now be placed into the conference. This call is being recorded.
Any other question? Um, if you have any other question, you can post it on the chat and then we can discuss that later on. I think Bimalji, we can move to the next one. Next slide, Vishwadi. Okay, the, the next topic is sanskars. As you can see, sanskars is a roadmap. Right? In the booklet we have given you also, it says it's direction to life. It is direction to life, right? And I had promised that I would link the two topics together. We talked about virtue for a long time, right? And there's a whole list of virtues on the slide number four, I showed you so many virtues and we only talk about five of them. Right? So, we feel like we are in a huge ocean. How do I swim this ocean across? So, sanskars is an external help which helps you build up, muster up this energy, gives the boost for short to keep doing that goodness. Right? And you will see that in this whole process of sanskars, you are just a participant and you are receiving the blessings from other. Prayers have been recited along with you, others are reciting with you for your goodness, not for their own goodness. Right? And you'll see when it starts and where it ends. It is right from the beginning to the end and before you are born and until you die. Right? And as I said, it is not you who are doing it by yourself. In most of these cases, it is always someone else helping you on the way. So, these are ceremonies which are celebrated with friends, with families, in a group environment and with the blessings of vidhans, saints and sages who come and participate in those ceremonies. Next slide. Vishwadi, next slide, thank you. So, we'll start with the very basic information. And in this chapter, I'm going to stick pretty much to the book as opposed to the previous topic where I did not. I hope you found the previous one valuable because that was something should have been covered in the book anyway. And the meaning of the word samskar. And the raw meaning of samskar means to purify, refine or transform something or reform something. Reform for goodness, not in a bad way. Right? When we say purifying, yes, it has a positive meaning, that I'm improving something. Refining and reforming does not always mean that you are making the thing better or worse. But when we are talking about that in, in, in terms of samskar, we are always saying that we are refining for goodness. Right? That has to be the underlying principle. The other meaning of samskar is also been found in the dictionaries is impression. Right? When you do something repeatedly, you keep on doing it, like you keep on speaking the truth. Right? You keep on saying every time you are truthful person, now people start trusting you. Right? And then they will predict you that this person can never say a lie because he has a habit of speaking the truth. So, you have created an impression on other people that I am a truthful person. So, similar impression is created on your mind. Just like we memorize things, similarly, there is an impression created of every action you do and those impressions basically drive your thinking process. It drives your thoughts and you act based on that. So, if you are doing good things repeatedly, one after the other, you are taking on those virtues which we were just talking about, then those virtues will start creating impression. You will reach a point that you will not accept truth, you will not accept violence, you will not hate anyone, you will not be revengeful to anyone. All of a sudden, you have not created a huge bank of that impressions which drives you in the positive direction. You have a lot of positive energy. Right? So, that's what the impression means in terms of samskars. Samskar research as rituals, as I said, ceremonies mostly in group, group, in groups, it's been performed to ensure that a person follows dharma in his life, he becomes a righteous person. That is the intention behind celebrating the ceremonies. Next. So, types of samskar, samskar, right? As I said that samskar is about refining, right? There are two kinds of samskars. Now, samskars, we are talking about types, two kinds of behaviors if you want to look at it that. There are good behaviors, bad behaviors. So, the good behaviors will create good samskars, good impressions. Bad behaviors will create bad impressions. Just like if you hang around with a bunch of kids who are losers, then that's what you are going to become, or you're going to be known as. Even if you are good qualities, people will know, you've known you as a loser because you're hanging out with them all the time. Because they can't distinguish from other kids that you're hanging out with. In the same way, if you're, if you're in a company of good friends, then you will become good because that goodness rubs on you. Right? So, every action, as I said, every action you do creates a samskar. So, I'll give an example here, right? Eating a banana is an action. Right? Throwing its skin in a dustbin is a good samskar. Throwing it on a ground is a bad samskar. You all knew this, right? But if you repeatedly do that, you become habitual to say that whenever I eat the banana, I just throw it on the, on the road somewhere, on the floor somewhere. You all know the consequence, somebody is going to walk on it and fall. So, when you keep on habitually doing it, that impression gets embraced, embedded in your brain, in your memory and it then causes you to continue doing those bad actions. And if they're good ones, you have the habit of throwing in the dustbin, that's what you're gonna get. Next. Importance. Why do we need to have samskars? Right? And when we say why we do have samskars, we're talking about the good ones now. So, the whole chapter talks about good samskars, it does not talk about the bad, bad samskars. The reason we had put it out there that you need to understand that samskar doesn't mean it's always good unless it is qualified with goodness or badness. Right? So, the rituals we do are for what? For purity of mind, intellect and intellect and the soul, all three. Right? Not just for the mind, but also for your soul. It, it's used for invoking blessings from God so that we can live a life. So, God, what does God's blessing mean? He will give you that inner strength, inner energy, inner bust to always follow the goodness. That is a blessing. You get, you get energy from God in different ways. That is one way, that he, he will make you a courageous person, will make you a better person in situation in tough times. As I said, that samskars show you a way of life, how you live your life and they guide you on that road. So, it, it becomes a navigator for you. And lastly, just we're talking the previous thing, I want to be a virtuous person, samskar makes you a virtuous person. Next. Okay, this is very critical, issue of caution on there, right? So, let's see, be alert. The traditions of samskars which were followed while in the olden days has been lost today. Today, these ceremonies are there, but they have become more like party gatherings. The rituals have lost the significance. A priest will come, perform samskar really, will not explain you anything about it. It is just some mantras were chanted, he, only he understands or few of us in the crowd understands and the rest of there are just there chattering and quacking around. Nobody benefits from it, a couple of people don't understand them. Right? The other thing we do, and I go to parties and I always complain about this, that the music is so loud, it hurts my ears. And if this samskars are performed for young child, a one-year-old or a four-month-old, with that loud music, how can it not hurt him? And we just said hurting is violence. So, are we observing a good behavior or not? I'm not saying we should not have parties, but then parties has to be appropriate. For example, when we go to a birthday party of a one-year-old, it has to be custom for his age. That has been lost. Parents don't pay attention to this either. That music lasts so long in a one-year-old child's party, the child doesn't even know what's going around. The music is not appropriate, the loudness is not appropriate, the amount of gathering that has happened is not appropriate sometimes either. So, sixteen samskars have been given by Maharshi Dhan and Saraswati in the Sanskar Vedi, navigates us through this samskar. It rejuvenates this, that the way of doing them and, and doing it in the right way. Next slide. Okay, so now we will go through sixteen samskars. And I made it, I've diced this down a little differently. If you look at on your left-hand side of your screen, I've listed down all the sixteen samskars and they are color-coded. Right? So, the first three which, which we are going to talk on this slide, they happen before birth. As I said that now, get a grasp of it, how many people are helping you to become a virtuous person so that you walk on the righteous path, become a good individual. Right? So, the first three, even before, even before you were born, you came physically in this world, the rituals start. The next two, four and five are broken down because they happen days after birth. The first one happens on the day the child is born and second happens on the eleventh day of the birth. Now, these days are arbitrary, someone will do it nine days, someone will do ten days. The accuracy is not there, but it is recommended you do on eleventh day. You do it on the thirteenth day, it is not a unlucky day. Right? It's better to do it than not do it, let's put it that way. Because it's better to have the blessings sooner or later, but it is never late. Right? Six and seven again are done months after the baby is born. Eight and nine are done years after the baby is born, but before he goes to school. Right? Ten, eleven and twelve are basically parts of your student life. They are those which are done when you become a student for the first time and the one when you end your education career. Your learning never ends, if, if you are talking about the spiritual learning, that never ends, ends. But the other aspects of your learning do stop. Right? You can still continue learning, but thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen are at different phases of your life. And in this curriculum, we don't have the ashrams, but they are related to the ashrams, they break at those, those dividers. So, let's start with the first three which are done before the birth, physical birth of a child, right? Garbadaan is something, once a couple has been married and they decide to have a baby, that's when it is done. It is just, understand the way it is. When you start a project, you want the project to go well. So, you will plan for it, right? You will say, okay, I need glue, I need paper, I need pencil, I need color to make sure my project happens properly. Right? So, that you don't have, you don't have to worry about it afterwards. Right? And if, if you are like me, you will even say a prayer. At oh God, I'm starting this, help me out. Right? So, this is that prayer. By two people who are living, who have been married and are living together and wants now have a child. So, it's saying that oh God, may the child that comes in our life be a pious soul and he may be physically and mentally healthy. Next. Now, this happens after three or four months after the pregnancy has been, has been conceived. And it is for both the mother and the child to be born. We have, because if the mother is healthy, the child will be healthy. So, we are praying for both in these rituals and oven is performed. In most of these rituals in ceremony, oven is performed. Right? Next. Shimantunam samskar. This is a very critical one, this is commonly in, in today's world and tradition is known as a baby shower. You all have been there, right? And again, as we were talking about lost tradition, in those baby shower also, there is so much commotion, so much loud music, music playing and sometimes I feel so much inappropriate music being played. Right? So, pay attention when you go to next time or, or this, right? Right? When a baby is about to be born, we are talking about six to eight months in the pregnancy. Right? The baby is just about to be, is just a month away from being born. At that time, the mother and the baby both need protection. Loud music and dancing is not going to give you that protection. Yes, the environment has to be cheerful, no argument about that. Everybody should be in a happy mood. But we can celebrate those functions quietly as well and more about, apart from the celebrations, it is more about understanding why we do that. Right? That's what puts the value in it. The mother has to understand, the father has to understand and the family has to understand and their friends have to understand so they can provide appropriate and moral support to the mother. Next. Okay. So, now we talked about the three ones which are before the child is born. On the day the child is born, the samskar is known as jatkarum samskar. It is about development of the intellect of the new child, right? It's meant for that, it says, the child has now come into this world. We have to make sure that he grows up to be a righteous individual. So, we start on the right foot. The father tells the child that you are a knowledgeable person. Right? And that is a very heavy statement, right? And someone who is born is just one-year-old and here you have been blessed, you have been encouraged. Right? The babies can hear, if, if, they can feel you and they have been told that you're knowledgeable, what an, what an inspiration and encouragement that is at, on day one. Right? So, that's why I'm saying that to follow the virtues, you have a lot of support, don't worry about it, just keep doing all the right things. In this ceremony, most commonly what is also been done is an om is written on the baby's tongue that whatever he speaks is sweet, is truthful. Right? So, that is another piece of blessing which is very important and critical at this point. Next. Namkaran samskar. This one's the easy one, right? Everybody needs a name to be identified, who am I? If, if you don't name the baby, and normally this also is slightly different because in today's time, I think before you come from the hospital, you have to register the name. Whereas here we are saying that on the eleventh day, we have to register the name. Right? It's slightly different, but we have to give and the name has to be something inspirational. Right? You just can't call him anything, it has to mean something. So, there are a lot of suggested names out of which the parents will speak, will pick. Right? Here, I think a lot of time, a good, a good job has been done by recently, I have gone to certain parties, especially in the baby shower, they said that can you suggest some good names for our baby? That's a good thing. Parents, a lot of suggestions to go through before they decide. Next. Next. Ashramansanskar. This is when you take the baby out for the first time, you don't take the baby out as soon as the baby is born, normally not unless you have a hospital or a doctor visit. Right? In the olden times, the doctors used to come and visit at home. I think that's, that was the tradition even when I was there in eighties, like when the doctor will come at your home. And there was no visiting fees been charged either, that were very hefty. Right? So, but the reason for this is slightly different, that the child is taken out in the air after, when it's a little bit healthy and strong and can face the atmospheric changes outside. And the significance of it, so the exposing to the five elements of nature for the first time. Especially the sun and the moon holds a very, very important significance in that aspect, that sun represents strength and moon represents emotion and in our life, we need a balance of both. So here the blessings are being given, again I keep on repeating myself, that you have lot of support for you to walk on the right path. So don't feel lonely. We'll get lost on the path somewhere, but you can see that if all this sixteen are done, until you start to the end, you're getting a lot of help. So there's no reason for you not to strive to become a good person. Next. Anprasasanskar. An means food. So this is offering, offering food to the child for the first time and food meaning solid food, until, until then, the child, or the baby takes liquid food. So it can digest properly and it can build up the energy. So this is the first time, which is somewhere between six to eight month. They start offering him food which the digestive system of a baby can digest. Right? It doesn't start eating pizza on that day. Right? It's going to eat some grains like rice mixed with ghee, something that is very easy to digest, can swallow. Because the teeth are not there yet. Right? And again, it is for the good health, so it can start building stronger, it can start becoming bigger, so that their elder siblings can play with him. And healthy food is very essential for the body, so whatever has been offered to the baby has to be healthy. Next. Okay. The next to what I have heard is there, there are quite bit of medical benefits from what I have heard, but I am not an expert on that subject matter. So I have not tried to put any, any of that information out there and also in our, our curriculum, we are not covering this sanskars at that depth. So I did not feel necessary to put those kind of information. I just put what are the primary benefits or the prayers that have been recited in, on those occasions and in some cases I have also put what is the purpose behind it. Right? So jidhakaram sanskar is basically shaving off the hair which the baby came with. Right? Some babies have a lot of hair, some babies have very few hair. Especially in the western countries, if you see, the babies come with very few hair and plus they are not even dark color. So you feel that they have less hair, in, in case of they have dark hair and thick hair as well. Right? I'm not sure if that's heredity or not. But cutting the hair is, 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 is a very prominent and I think it's been done by, in, in quite few, it's, it's been done by a lot of people. And in some case, there is a slight choaty, what they call left behind. In modern times, probably they don't leave it, but in olden times, I think it was more common. This is also following, it, it, it leads to cleanliness, longevity, digestive, those are health benefits, which I am not an expert on this, so I, I would not talk about it. How? Because that question may come up. I'm admitting right off that I don't know how it helps the digestive health or not, some medical expert may go to throw some light on it, you may want to ask them that question. One thing to notice about this, this is also known as a mundan sanskar, because you are shaving off the hair of the baby's head and that's why it's also known as mundan sanskar. Next. Right? So now you have shaved off the heads at age, between age three or maybe sometimes between age three and five, as I said, all these years are arbitrary. Some, some parents may do it early, some parents may do it late, some parents will never do it. Right? And not all this are followed by everyone. If you are now here or you follow the Vedic traditions, then you should be doing all the sixteen. But there are certain ones we are done for everyone as well. Right? Karana means ear and ved means to pierce. So here we are piercing the ears of the baby. And it's done, as I said, between third and the fifth ear. People think that this is only applies to the females, that's not the case, it's done for both boys and girls. And according to Ari Wada, there are benefits of piercing ears as well. Next. These are really important. This is where your student life begins, this is the day when you are ready to go to school. And here we say that it starts at age five to eight, that was the timeframe which was given in the olden days. When, when students went to gurukul, they never stayed home. So it was parents' responsibility to build the character of the child, teach him whatever they could teach him until age five or until age eight in that case. And thereafter, they will send the child to a gurukul and he will stay with the guru until he has graduated. He does not come home, that was how the gurukul pranali used to work. Today is different, today, like Acharya Gnaneshwar, which you say that today the parents have to play both the roles and they failed to do that because they are not worth, they are not ready for it. Parents have to play the role of a parent and have to play the role of a guru because the child stays at home. Right? Teachers are there only when you are in school, but what after that? So when the, when the students had to go to gurukul, it was twenty-four-seven school. They were taught everything they need to know at the gurukul, nothing at home. Right? So that's the difference between gurukul and what we have a traditional school system here today. Anyone in India, I'm not talking today only in United States, I talk about across the globe. Right? So this upnayan sanskar is basically a thin cord is given, it's also known as yajapravaid, in some religions they call it jnai. They are pretty much the same words being used, but according to Vedic tradition, there is a cord which has three strands in it, which is given to the child and he wears that, the three strands represents three reins, three obligations which he has in, in his life, he has to fulfill. Right? To fulfill that, he has to go undergo this study and he has to go to guru and understand what are those three reins and how we will be able to fulfill from this life here on. The first one is devrin. Devtavakarin, there are a lot of devtas, jar and non-jar, which helps you, which gives onto you, we talked about devtas a whole lot in the last session, I won't repeat that. Kritarin is basically your parents, grandparents and elders, we had also talked about, about this one under the panchmahabhas. And rishirin is basically the teachers who teach you, gurus who give you knowledge. And so you have to fulfill all those three and that thread which you wear reminds you of that. Right? And this is also a dying tradition, but it is a very important one, it needs to be revived. Vedaram is done right after the upnayan sanskar or at the time of upnayan sanskar, both these ceremonies happen at the same time. And this marks the formal beginning of your education basically, saying that, okay, now I'm going to go to a kindergarten, kindergarten. Right? Nowadays, there is school even before kindergarten, so I don't know where it starts. Today the students go to, the student life starts at three. Right? Number twelve is you live with a guru from your age five to twenty-one or twenty-five. So samavartan sanskar is basically a graduation party in today's time. Right? So that again is a dying, dying ritual which is not performed, yes, there are a lot of graduation party, but there is nothing stock about this sanskar. Right? It is basically, you are now telling the society that I have gone through my education system, I have learned about this spiritually, I have learned about how to succeed in, in the social environment, economic life and now I'm ready to come back into a gross asham. So it is that, that's a ceremony which concludes your study part, as I said, the, the learning goes on, going to a traditional school stops or going to a school stops basically. Next. Once you finish colleges and mom and dad will tell you now, you need to get married. It doesn't work in today's days. Right? But that's what the tradition is, that you need to start planning your future ahead. Right? At an appropriate time, again, this is an arbitrary age, twenty-five is, is something may not hold for today. I've seen instances when this happened early, I've seen instances when it happened late or very late. Right? Sometimes it becomes a personal choice. Right? So this basically marks, it happens after creation of your student life and when you are ready to move on with a lifelong companion. Together, your objective is to build on that righteous life. Those learnings which you have learned in the school, now it's the time to apply them and execute them. Right? So that goes on for twenty-five years, as I said, that the next, all of them fall into their slot, there's a designated time slot, twenty-five years for each one of them, the grahasham starts at twenty-five and ends, ends at fifty. So when it ends, the vandrasham starts or vandras, at that time you are saying that in this twenty-five years, I have, I have done what I could do, I have raised my kids, I have made them, I have gone through the process of building their characters, I have given, imparted them the virtues values which I lived by and what vedas have asked us to live by. Now it is time for me to move on, to give back to the society, I have given to my family until now, but now I'm going to go, go, give back to the society. Whatever you have learned, right? On the way, while you were teaching your kids, you are also learning. I always learn more when I teach kids. Right? So this is your time to go back and give back to the society. Right? This is treated as a retirement, in today's term, it is retirement, now we all know that retirement do not come at fifty, they come at sixty-five, come at seventy, come at seventy-five. So this asham is pretty much, has a tradition of being skipped in today's time. Right? It's very important to do social services, it helps your self-development. Right? And more importantly, you are paying back to the society, as I said, that devtas, they are people who give you and given you so much, it's time for you to pay back. And if you skip this, that is what we miss out on. We never catch on. And any debt we carry, it will catch up person in the next life, next life, we have to pay at some point in time. So that's the vandrasham, which is number fourteen. Next. Sanyas, after vandras at seventy-six, as I said, there are twenty-five slots, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-five to fifty, fifty-two, seventy-five and seventy-six to hundred. We are all expected to live for hundred years. I'm not sure if we do, based on our current lifestyle or other, other illnesses we have because of our own fault or other reasons. Sanyas starts at seventy-six. Sanyas is basically saying that I have served the society, I have given up, now it is time for myself. From twenty-five to fifty, I worked to build my, my family and I took care of my family. From fifty to seventy-five, I took care of the society. I paid my debts in both those respects, now it is time for me to do something for myself and what I have to do is reach the goal of my life, which is moksh. How do I liberate myself? So this is the time where you give up everything. If you are ready for it, most of us are not ready for this, so this asham is also pretty much skipped. Right? In today's tradition and when we skip it, we have to catch up on the next life, there is no getting away because if we seek the ultimate liberation, you have to walk through this ashram. Without that, there is no way out because that is the gateway to moksh. The last sanskar is antieste sanskar, which happens, like we said, there were three sanskars that happened before the baby, baby is born. This one is one which happens after the person has died. So look what it happens, even after you die, people are still praying for you. So what more help can you ask for to become a virtuous person, to become a righteous person? It starts before you're born and ends after you're gone. So people are still praying, it, it is two-part things, first thing, once the bo, person dies, meaning death is when the body separates from, when the soul separates from your physical body. So what do you do with the physical body? You cremate it, the best way to dispose of that body is to burn it off. When you burn it off, it assimilates into those five elements, basic elements, earth, water, fire and an ether. Right? And that is what the purpose of cremation is, Hindus believe in cremation, a lot of other cultures and religions believe in burying. It takes much longer to decompose a body and their bones and to de, decompose when you bury it. Right? So that is the purpose of cremation and Hinduism. And the other thing is, there is a prayer, as I said, there's a prayer being said that, oh God, the soul that has passed on, may that soul find peace. Because while he was living in on this earth, maybe he was going through the agony, he was suffering, he had unrest, he had anger, he had violence. But now that he has nun, we pray that he finds peace in the next cycle of his life. Right? So that prayers for, by others for you never ends in this tradition. It continues life after life. Right? And the other, other purpose of this is also that a vidwan will come into it and they will say some words of emotional support for the family who is lost, we all feel a loss when someone leaves. Right? In every part, parting, there's an image of death, right? So when someone dies and somebody moves on, we feel sad because he was a good friend. He was a good family member, he gave us a lot of things, he helped us out, so we miss him. This is okay, the emotions are natural. Right? But we have to move on and the words of comforts are recited, the prayers of comforts can say as well. So this marks the end of this session as well. Uh, we can go on to the next slide, there are some questions, you can try to answer the questions. Right? So I will read off the question again for people who are just on audio. Hopefully they can follow that and try to answer the questions, I'll read them slowly. Which sanskar marks the beginning of education? Which sanskar marks the beginning of education? Vedaram, samavartan, upnayan, viwa, vandrasht. Again, the options are vedaram, samavartan, upnayan, viwa, vandrasht. Question number two. Which sanskars are performed before the baby is born? So multiple choice question, multiple answers. Purnasevan, jatikarma, garbadan, shrimantonayan, karanave. Again, five options. You can choose, you have to choose more than one answer. Purnasevan, jatikarma, garbadan, shrimanto, karanave. Third question, death sanskars are mandated to be performed in every human being's life. Death sanskars are mandated to be performed in every human being's life. Eight, three, one, sixteen, none of the above. Again, the options are eight, three, one, sixteen, none of the above. And the last question, I think this is the wrong question for this session, but try it anyway. Being truthful makes you fearless. If you remember the previous chapter now. Peshwaji can open up for question answers.
There is one question, uh, what is the difference between
There is one question, uh, what is the difference between air and ether?
Air is vayu, right? Ether is space if you want to take it in an English translation. In Hindi or in Sanskrit, they call it avakash, where things are created. Right? So without space, a, a thing will not occupy any jada keta, right? So ether is basically space, loosely translated, translated word if you want to use. So anything that takes volume, that volume is the space we are talking about. But air is vayu, that air is the wind you feel, right? Air is related to your sense of touch. Air, you can feel. Space you cannot feel with your skin. Do you satisfy? Feel free to add, but that's my understanding.
Yes, uh, so there was another question. What is the scientific basis or reason for sanskar number nine and ten? So that is karnave and upnayan.
Okay, I had qualified upfront, right? That scientific evidence, I do not know. Again, I'm not a medical scientist or a medical doctor or anything. I think that question probably we have to table it unless someone on the call knows the answer. But personally, I am, I do not know. There are a lot of benefits been mentioned and several other sanskars as well. Uh, I take the words of our sastras, having written by Swami Dhan and Saraswati. I, I do take it, there must be some truth to it, but if you ask me in today's physical science, I do not have any supporting argument to make on that.
From the medical science perspective, even I wouldn't be able to, but whatever we have read. One thing is that if, for the number eight, churakarm mundan. If we remove old hair a couple of times, the next hair comes much better, of good quality and they are very strong. So that's one reason. And secondly, what they say is, uh, after coming from school, there are some impurity stuck in the hair. And removing it helps cleaning up the head areas, uh, better. So those two things I have heard. For the ninth karnave, um, but the connection that I learnt was there is a nerve that impacts our, um, system. So if we do karnave the right way, uh, it impacts avoiding the hernia problem in, in future. So, uh, that I have read in the sanskar bhaskar or somewhere. But again, you got to have the right, um, Ayurveda vaidya, who understands the nervous system, nerve system. And here, the, the, the karnave has to happen right around that nerve for that medical benefit to be gained. The practical reasoning is that, uh, the, the ear piercing has to happen. Sooner it happens is better, it's less painful for the child. Uh, the, the more, um, uh, we grow, the, the skin becomes more stronger, it becomes harder to pierce it. So that's, those are the reasons. So they are some of the traditions as well as the reasons that we have read based on the Ayurveda in the books. But we have to see what medical studies have been done and how they have been related to this.
Hopefully we'll be able to cover this little bit in details in level three, I would say.
Oh, sure. Yeah. We will carry these questions later on as well because this vedat one is focused on what? And then of course, why and how is going to be coming. But good questions and I think we have tried to address to some extent and we'll table them for, uh, days to come. There's one last question. Anthesti is called sanskar and it is after death, why?
Okay, uh, the, again, as I said, that, uh, the reason was given and, and that's the best reason I can give you. That it is a sanskar where you have to, when, when someone dies, the body is left behind, the soul has moved on. Right? So what, and who does something for that body? If your parents lived with you, isn't it your moral responsibility to make sure that that body has been disposed in a proper way? Now I use the word disposer and it may not sound good, but that's what really what has to happen. Right? So who takes care of that body, right? If say for example, uh, you have a dog as a pet and the dog passes away. Isn't it your responsibility to make sure that the dog ends up not in your backyard somewhere? You just don't throw it away in the garbage bin. And you have to dispose that body also in the right way. It's the same way, this sanskar is meant for that. Our Rishi has thought about it that it is responsibility of the family left behind to take care of that body. So that is one part of that sanskar. It has to happen. Right? And at that time, as I said, that it's a dual thing. That body lived with us, the soul which was there. So there's a prayer for the soul. Now the loose connection here is that, can I still pray for the soul and will God hear my prayers in that regards? I'm a little bit unclear in that space that why do we pray for a soul that has passed on? Right? Because it is going to acquire in a body and it is going to go through a new life. So but again, that, that is the prayer been made at, at that time. And more importantly, it is for us again, if someone very close to you pass away, then you emotionally feel a lot of pain. Right? Lot of people get depressed. So at that time, you need a support system. So when these ceremonies were performed, they were all inclusive of all these aspects that you call a priest, you call a vidvan, will come and explain you this, the reality of it, that everybody dies. It is natural to die, but on the other hand, they should all be able to tell you some comforting words so that you can build, kick yourself out of that emotional thing. Right? If you look at and read, uh, Mahabharata, right? This thing happened to you this year. He was called Dharmaraja. People looked up to him to follow a righteous life. Right? In the twelfth purva of Mahabharata, he is depressed. So if it can happen to him, we are nobody, right? We, we, for us also, we need someone. And in his case, Vishivyaas came and helped him out of that situation. He was ready to commit a suicide, saying that I fought this great war. All my relatives are dead, they're all gone. What am I gonna do with this? I want to die too. At that time, Vyas came and preached him dharma. So that is what the vidvans will do and that is what this sanskar is made for, that at that point in time, somebody wise will come and tell you how to move on. They won't tell you, just shake off, shake off your sadness and move on. That's not how it is done. They help you out. There's a process which goes on. You repeatedly hear them and then you build that confidence that, okay, this makes sense. So that is what that sanskar is done for ideally.
There's a follow-up comment as well from U R seven and I'm not sure what's the name. Are thus going to sixteen sanskar gets me closer to God? And not going so takes me away or harder to achieve God. So that's the question.
Okay, sixteen sanskars, as I said, are done by somebody. As I said, that we have to, we have to embrace virtues. And in that process, we have to live a life and in our process of living a righteous life, we have a huge support system. The sanskar is nothing but a support system and a guide. Right? Now do we follow that guidelines as prescribed? Then it will take you close to God. If you don't, then it will move you away from God. So just doing a sanskar is not going to take you close to God, right? That, that's what today's rituals have become and I emphasize on that as well, that today the rituals have become more just a party time. No way that is going to take you towards God. Right? But if you follow it as prescribed and you embrace the spirituality, you inculcate that feelings in you and you act according to it. And you start becoming a virtuous person, following the righteous path. Then there is definitely a path closer to God. That's what also means if you skip, skip one of this, it, it is not end of it, right? It doesn't mean a bad thing, but this was prescribed for a reason. Because at every juncture, some, there is some significance. There is a turn in your life. And that it helps you on that turn. At that point, you're just, just like Vishwajit said, that if you pierce the ear at the right age, there is less pain for the baby. And then it has to be the right now as well. Right? Today, I think especially girls, even boys do this, where they go pierce their ears. When they are like twenty-one, twenty-two or in college. Does that have the benefit? I'm not sure. It's that late in the game. It has become more of a fashion, right? So if you're doing it just for the fashion, no, you're not going to go towards God. So a lot of these sanskars are just telling you that how you should be living your life. They tell you, they are just a guide. If you read the guide and follow, probably you will benefit from it. If you just read it and do nothing about it, then you're not going anywhere.
Okay, just adding on to what Vimalji said. Sixteen, every sanskar is a change of the phase, it's a milestone. So because we are in, we are part of a life cycle, that sixteen is the end of the life cycle. And burning of the body does not make any impact on going closer or not closer to the God. But the actions that we do before that, all the fifteen sanskar, yes, it makes the difference whether we go close to the God or not to the God. Burning the body is a change in the face of the soul and it is our social responsibility as well. That's something which is gone, gone best now, which is going to be stale, we take care of that in a proper manner. So it's a social responsibility as well and it marks the change of the life cycle or change of, it's a new milestone for that soul's journey. So that's about anthesti. And the last question that I will not take any more than that. Um, someone said, but where, how does the impression takes place? I'm not sure if it is, uh, in, in reference to anthesti or something else. The question is not clear. Um, so I think we are getting closer. We already passed the time. And this was the last session, uh, before we, uh, actually go to the exam. If any question has a follow-up, you can send an email and we'll get you an email response. Uh, if you have any feedback on the mock exam, please do share on the email. If you find a problem with any question, uh, you can share on the email. Uh, we have made the many corrections in, in the titles that, uh, we have had in the questions. So it's lot improved. Uh, but we thank everyone for taking the mock exams, giving the feedback, participating in the study sessions. And we wish you good luck for your studies, preparations and doing great in the exam. As you all know and you must be getting in the emails, um, exam will be open on, uh, on Sunday, December tenth. And for your, and at your local R S M A center as well. If you do not have received your login ID, please do send an email out and you will be having it shown. But we hope that we will have hundred percent passing rate on the, on the exam. And we wish you all a good luck again. And that does not take away the great effort that Vimalji has done for preparing this, uh, session. Uh, thanks to you, Vimalji and anyone who helped you, uh, to, uh, to come up with the, such a nice presentation in just couple of days. So it's a treasure that, um, this recording itself will be continuing to be used for people in future too. So it's a great asset that we are creating, that with your help, uh, for the benefit of the people. So, um, thanks everyone for joining in. Uh, the recording will be shared on the Facebook tomorrow or by the day after. But, but, and keep looking for the mock questions. We have around twenty so far. And around ten or fifteen more we will share in the coming week. And add those to the twenty-five that you would have seen in your exam. So you know around fifty questions or fifty-five questions that are potentially coming in the exam. So please keep following up the emails, Facebook messages and, um, yeah, and those two things for to getting the, to get more and more information. Uh, good luck again and we will stay in touch on the email, on the next steps and if any questions are concerned. We also have formed a WhatsApp group. If you want to stay connected and if you are not on that WhatsApp group, you can email your, um, uh, WhatsApp number, uh, and then we will add you there. Okay? Uh, namaste again. Thank you and good luck for the exam. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.